Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for February 27, 2023. Ms. Fister, would you please call the roll?
Council President Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. We are, because we didn't meet last week, we have to do briefings for both tonight's meeting and next week's meeting. And we also are going to get an introduction to our new Human Resources Director. I'm going to start with potential changes for tonight's agenda so that the sign-in sheets can get prepared. And towards that end, I've had a request on the consent agenda for tonight, page five, to defer item two for one week, which is a grant agreement with Spokane Arts Fund for ARPA distribution. They need to go over a little more language with City Legal. Is there a motion to defer that until the 13th, until the 6th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that is deferred. All right. Going to the last page for tonight, page 10, hearing number one, ordinance C36357. Substitute ordinance has been circulated. This is the parking lots to people initiative that would make it easier for developers to develop affordable housing on our parking lots downtown. And this would, the city actually led the charge to get this passed in legislature. And now they're saying we need to pass something to activate it. And so their last version was circulated by Jacoby this afternoon. Is there a motion to substitute it?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. That is substituted. Oh, on resolutions, on page nine at the top, there's a resolution with an attached statement in support of the regional collaborative effort on homelessness. And there is kind of a statement attached, and a few of us council members have been discussing, right now there's a signature line for the mayor of Spokane and the city council of Spokane. And we've discussed moving to amend that to just remove the mayor line and the city council line and just the city of Spokane. And I don't think we need to do a substitute. I think clerk can make that if we pass that. So is there a motion to adopt those changes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Yeah.
Just for clarification, whose signature then would go on it?
There's no signature. It'd just be, just be the city of Spokane.
Got it, okay.
Yep. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, that is amended. And then, the most popular topic for the evening is the ordinance on landlord-tenant issues. If you saw my email just recently, we've continued lots and lots of discussions, especially with councilmembers Stratton and Cathcart and working with City Legal. We've divided that into two ordinances. It's everything that was essentially in the last drafts that are out there, but divided into two with a few language tweaks from City Legal for various things. But we were looking to substitute the version that I call Part One for C36330 and then adding, oh, but first we would have to suspend the rules. So let me go back. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of adding items to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay. The rules are suspended. And now I'll ask for a motion to substitute what I sent around just a few minutes ago as Part One to substitute for C36330. Is there a motion to substitute?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the substitution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right, that passed. And then there is, is there a motion to add to tonight's agenda for final reading what I circulated as Part Two but will be known as Ordinance C36366?
Can you do that one more time?
Yep. Add Ordinance C36366, which is what I circulated as Part Two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adding that ordinance to tonight's agenda for final reading indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Two nays? Any abstentions? All right.
Council President, real quick, can you clarify what Part Two was?
Yes.
Because I don't think everyone, or the public hasn't seen it.
Sure. So Part One, so we had one agenda with lots of different provisions. And Part One essentially is the landlord rental registration and inspection sections. Part Two includes everything else, anti-retaliation provision, the landlord mitigation fund, the tenant relocation legal fund.
Portable background checks.
Portable background checks, duties to conduct walkthroughs and maintain records and give notice for mold. I think this covers most of it. And Lauren Beatty, who by the way, has done a fabulous job on the legal side of this, divided them into two, essentially at the request of Councilmember Cathcart with strong support from Councilmember Stratton. So any further discussion on the motion to add C36366? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, that's added. We might take further action on deferring the service level agreement for Shrek, but the folks are here, so let's, we'll get to that in briefing and we'll address that after that. So at this point, I think I'll turn it over to City Administrator Perkins to introduce our new HR director and hear from him. And then we'll go to brief the rest of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Council President Biggs, members of the city council, Johnny Perkins, City Administrator. I want to, before I introduce Mr. Moss, I want to say one more time, like to commend, thank, and, and really show my appreciation and refer to him for the last time as interim Human Resources Director, Mr. Mike Piccolo, who now will return to Assistant City Attorney. And Mike, the job you have done has just been incredible. The leadership you provided to our Human Resources Staff and Department has been second to none. And I just want to again, thank you on behalf of the entire city for that service and serving in a dual role for all these months. So appreciate it. And now it's a great honor and pleasure to introduce our new Human Resources Director, who is, I believe, about five hours on the job. And it's a distinct honor for me to introduce Mr. David Moss.
Good afternoon, everyone. Glad to be here. Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry about that, I didn't realize. I'm glad to be here, looking forward to work with you guys and accomplishing great things, as well as working with HR department and other entities within the city to accomplish great things. Have received nothing but warm welcome since I got here this morning and just ready and eager to get things rolling, headed down the right direction.
Welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
We're so happy to have you.
Just a quick question. Can you just tell us briefly where you, where you're from in this move, where you're coming from?
Relocating from Georgia, originally from New York City, relocating from Georgia. Have plans this weekend to get with the Realtors to find, look at some areas in Spokane. Yeah, like I said, ready to, eager to get started, eager to make things happen and work with you guys.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do not say District One.
I was going to say there, there are two houses on my street for sale right now. Look in that general area. We have a great neighborhood.
Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. I just want to close by saying Mr. Moss's experience in human resources and labor relations is really going to be beneficial to our city on those two particular topics. So David, again, welcome to Spokane. All right, moving ahead then with the consent agenda for, the consent advance agenda for Monday, February 27th. Item number one, I'm going to introduce our interim city attorney, Mr. Lyndon Smithson, who's going to introduce our guest from the Spokane Regional Emergency Communications Center. And this is a service level agreement with the Spokane Regional Emergency Communications Center relating to fire dispatch. Mr. Smithson, I'll turn it over to you to introduce our guest and present the briefing to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. I appreciate that. Thank you, council, for having me come down and speak to you today. So we have asked some of the members from Shrek to come in and discuss the service level agreement with you and also to, I know that there have been a lot of questions about fire dispatch, and we asked them to come down, answer those questions, and hopefully we can get a better understanding of what, what we need going forward in the service level agreement and also what we can expect from fire dispatch. So I encourage you to ask questions. Councilmember Stratton, we did send the questions over to them, spoke with Ms. Markham today, who's, who's here, and she stated that she's hoping to get all those questions answered later this week. I think she told me she's going on vacation on Wednesday, and she does not want it on her plate when she goes on vacation, so.
That's fine.
Yes. So today we have Fire Chief Cody Werbach, who is the Director of the Board for Shrek, and then Lori Markham will be here to present and answer questions as well, so. And then after you speak with them, if we have any more questions, if we want to talk about the service level agreement, I'll come back up and we can talk about that, yes.
And, and do you know, are there plans to have them come then to committee to answer additional questions outside of this issue?
Sorry, yes. And, and I didn't, I didn't bring that up, but yes, we would like them to come back in about a month's time or so to talk about the police dispatch side. I know that there are a lot of questions about crime check. I want to do some investigating so that I'm, I have a lot of information and I know where things are at before we have those conversations, but definitely I think it would be beneficial. And I know that a lot of people on, on the council would like to have those discussions. So that is the plan.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Great to see you.
Good to see you.
So we're here to discuss any questions you might have on our fire service level agreement. Just for some historical background, the city of Spokane approached us this past summer asking if there was any chance that we could take on the work of fire dispatch. I'm not sure what led to that point, but that was the request made to us. We had to go, our timeline moved a little bit sooner than we anticipated because of the, the need to get firefighters back into the stations after the mandate was lifted from the governor. And so we ended up, instead of taking over fire services on January 1st, taking over those fire services and dispatch services on November 1st. So the service level that we have provided the city of Spokane is similar to any of the other service levels we have for our fire service agencies, which is all of the fire agencies in Spokane County. So I'm here to answer whatever questions you might have.
Is, is dispatch, is that fully staffed now?
We are staffed, we are minus four dispatchers at the moment. Those were the, the dispatchers we anticipated taking on when we took on the city of Spokane. We anticipate that we will be up and dispatched in a timely fashion. We have one in training right now, and we're moving another one over in March for training. So we are hoping to be fully staffed in, in fire dispatch by summertime when we have fire season. So we're working towards that.
How many total are in that particular section? So you're missing four, what's the, what's the total number?
Our goal is 15 for that area.
15, okay.
Can I ask, can I ask about board structure? Is that?
It's up to the county, not them.
Well, I mean, as far as the city's representation on the board, I think one of my concerns, I don't know about others, but when we've discussed it, I understand somebody from Administration Council of that level needs to be on that board, I get that. Then there's a second position. And one of the discussions that I've had with others is, do we look at somebody who's had their boots on the ground? I mean, I know that there are several firefighters who have done both. They've done dispatch for fire, they've been out there on the engines doing 911 calls, all of those. And I guess, I'm just saying for me, it, I would like at least that to be considered if possible, because I think it brings a different slant to it, right? When you have somebody that's actually.
Sure. So we have several different groups that, that I guess feed into information for the board to make decisions. The executive board, that's where a lot of the overhead decisions are made, like our financial decisions and contracts, things like that. We also have the Fire Communications Advisory Board and the Law Communications Advisory Board, where there are operational chief level that, that can contribute to those conversations and present things to the board from there. So that might be a place where that can, can happen for you. But the, the board, the actual board makeup is comprised of folks that the Board of County Commissioners dictated through charter, and it's made up of fire chiefs and police chiefs or, or sheriffs, so.
No, no, I think that's a great, great perspective and great, great question, and that decision would ultimately sit with the, the board of county commissioners. But as, not only the chair as a member agency, I would add, since, since inception, both on the, the law operations group as well as the fire operations group, I, I can't recall one instance where the board did not back recommendations coming, coming out of those operational groups. So there has been good, good consensus for that perspective.
And I'll add to that just really quick, that the city actually has positions on those boards right now. So they've had them since the start of Shrek.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so I guess I'm just wondering, kind of maybe just to piggyback, if it is a decision of the, of the commissioners, and I know a lot of this does fall to them, do, does Shrek or has Shrek, I guess in the past, brought recommendations to the commissioners for them to consider, or is it entirely the other direction?
So the, the initial makeup of Shrek, the, the decision was made, the recommendation was made by the group that was putting Shrek together at that time. When the city made the decision to, to abstain from joining initially, we, the board, the board went to the commissioners and stated, you know, they don't have anybody there. So at that point, it was a recommendation that those positions be removed. And we were asked the question this past summer, I believe, of whether or not we allow for positions back on the city, if the city, for the city if the city becomes members. And our recommendation was that, yes, some, some sort of representation was needed.
And it's, it's reverted back to essentially the recommendation from that initial consultation. I don't remember, who is the, there was a consultant brought in on the initial construct? And so we've been under that recommendation.
I don't have any, personally, I don't have any major concerns over the appointees, but I, but I do, I do think to some degree, we should have some ability to decide who those people are that would be representing the city on that, on that board. So that, that's why I ask.
Councilmember Stratton.
So just let me know if I'm, if I cross over into another lane that I shouldn't be in.
Sure.
The other thing I'm hearing is when we talk and I hear from other people, is a relocation in the future and a new facility? And how, I mean, do, do we know how that's going to be paid for already? I mean, or talks?
Sure.
In discussion, or people?
Yeah, so, so we are looking to relocate. We've outgrown the facility that we're in. Additionally, we're looking for a place that's a little bit safer than the current location. We, we had a company come in and do a study just to find out if there were any concerns with our current location, and we're looking at relocating in the same area that the sheriff's office is doing their training center and their, their shooting range. We have several million in reserve that we've been kind of stowing away, waiting for that. We're anticipating getting a, a few more in the next couple of years through taxpayer dollars and good budgeting. And our hope is that in three to five years, we'll be able to, to break ground and make that happen. There's a possibility that we might have to take out a small, a small loan, but our hope is to get most of it paid for ahead of time.
Perfect, thanks.
Just note to self, we have space in the city hall.
Good idea. It's fair enough.
I, I had a question for you on the difference between primary PSAP and secondary PSAP. My understanding is for several years, we were billed the same, the city and other people who, on law enforcement. And then this year, a change was made that we were going to be billed for secondary, even though other law enforcement wasn't going to get billed secondary. I'm not sure if that's correct or not, but can you explain?
Sure.
Yep?
So the difference between a primary PSAP and a secondary PSAP is, is basically those dispatch services and the triage services. So prior to, to Shrek, Spokane County 911 took care of all of that, and I can't begin to tell you what the methodology was for that because I wasn't a part of that at that time. But in having conversations around the state and looking at our overall budget and the process of how we do things, we came to the realization that while we do have a responsibility as the primary PSAP to provide the phone system, which is provided through us, and to make sure that there's an initial answer of that call, the triage service, which is completely something separate, was going to have to either be billed or passed along to SPD for them to handle themselves. That part of it for our, our member agencies is done through our, our user fees. So that's a part of it. So SPD was never charged for those previously, and we are just trying to kind of right the, right the ship.
But are you charging the sheriff in Liberty Lake for those as well?
That's paid for through their user fees, yes.
So they're paying?
User fees.
A user fee?
Yes.
And is it, how, is that broken down by secondary PSAP?
They're, they're not secondary PSAPs, they're part of the primary PSAP. So it's paid for through their user fees through the primary PSAP. The only secondary PSAPs that we have in this county are City of Spokane Police Department, City of Cheney Police Department, and Spokane International Airport.
I get, but I guess I'm, but do you break out an actual fee to them for that secondary PSAP?
It, it's all encompassed within our user fee.
I know, but is it the user fee for 911, initial dispatch? I mean, what is it?
It's, it's for, it's for dispatch and user fees. It's, it's all, we provide them one, one bill.
Yeah, and I, I think the, to your question, I think the distinction comes from, you know, your call intake to the additional call triage that occurs after that. And that's where, as member agencies, we pay for that as part of our, our user.
But are you, like, if we were using you as your police, if we were, if you were dispatching our police? I'm just trying to see if you're passing that secondary cost on to your users, or is it just part of the dispatch?
It's, it's part of it. It would be included in that dispatch.
But if we just went to you and said, hey, we want the same deal on police, just full on, would we be paying the same rate as the sheriff in Liberty Lake?
Yes.
And is that, do you have that down to like a per call?
And for clarification, same methodology?
Same methodology.
For the rate based on call volume.
And do you, what's the per call for the full meal deal?
It depends, it depends on the year. The way that we do our user fees is it breaks down into, after we, we distribute the excise tax and the one-tenth sales tax, once that is done, we look at what is needed to basically fund our, our operation. And then we do a 40, 60% split between our law enforcement and our fire. Fire has 40, law has 60, just because of the amount of calls that come in. And then it's based on call volume. So it'll differ depending on, on your call volume for the year previously or.
But could we get it from the last year that you have those?
Sure, yeah.
That'd be helpful, because we of course have to balance how much it's costing us on police, just like fire. So it'd be helpful to know.
Yep, absolutely.
So, so I take it then that, I guess the, the arrangement with the city of Spokane would be treated differently then than others? I mean, we don't have a specific user fee like the others, right? So is that why it's, you're, it's, it's different?
For the police department?
For, for the entire thing.
So the city of Spokane Fire Department has just been moved into the fire model if, if the, if the service level agreement is signed. If it's not signed, then that puts us, puts us in a position where we're going to treat you as a non-member. And that's a different, we have a policy for member, non-member. So that's what we're looking at in that scenario. Police, the question about, about the user fees, if they were joining our agency wholeheartedly with, you know, full intent of dispatch and user fees, they would just fold into our model as well, and they would be treated the exact same. If they choose just one of those services, they'd be considered a non-member.
So is there a, a different cost then, if you're a member versus a non-member?
There is.
And so is there a different level of commitment to be a member versus a non-member?
The, the difference is just that it's, it's more work for us to have to bill separately and do that thing. So that's what you're seeing is those overhead charges that we're, we're having to put the work into making, to making it separate, so.
Okay.
But as it relates to the Spokane Fire Department SLA, it's, it's identical. But as it relates to the Spokane Fire Department SLA, it's identical to the same agreement I have as Fire District III. There's, I think, one call out, paragraph 13, related to some statistics that council desired, so we've added that at your request. But outside of that, it's identical as it relates to call intake and triage dispatching.
Is there any analysis that you do on the 911 sales tax as far as by jurisdiction, or does that just go against the whole system first?
So that goes against the way that the state does this. We receive the money from the state, so it's, they just, they send it to the county, so it would be the state to do the analysis on that.
But I guess my question, and I didn't ask a very good question. My question is, when you spend that money, do you spend it only on primary PSAP, or are you spending it on secondary PSAP?
We spend it on secondary PSAP through the phone system and the replacement of the phone system. It's a multimillion-dollar system that we're paying for every year. Additionally, it does help to pay for the employees that do the initial call, taking a determined jurisdiction as that primary PSAP.
Okay, but it's not being used for employees to do secondary PSAP?
No.
Okay, great.
We did reach out to the state.
Yes, we did. We do have a letter, I believe, that was sent to your administration from the state on how that 911 sales tax is used, so.
Yeah, and just to verify, that was consistent, what we're seeing across the state.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, well, oh, go ahead.
So did we defer this one?
We haven't discussed that yet. I do, we do, are looking forward to seeing you again to answer the questions that Lyndon emailed you, I think. But, and it might be a while, though, because I don't think we're, there's no public safety in April, I don't think.
We have to get to March first.
I know, but that's next week.
Oh, okay.
So they're not coming back next week, so.
I'm gone.
So it's probably May.
But I did, I did do a reach out as well, and would make myself, and Lori agreed as well, if we wanted to do some, some meetings in the interim, make myself available for that.
Okay, and we might, everyone thinks we have unlimited study sessions that we could do, but, so if we can't before May, we'll do that. Yeah.
So given that we're still waiting for information, others may have additional questions, I'd like to make a motion to defer it.
Okay. Do you want a certain amount of time, or do you indefinitely, or what?
I would say indefinitely till we get the information we think we need to make a good decision.
Can I speak to that, sir? Or is that inappropriate?
You want a second before we speak?
There's a second. You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember, I mean, city administrator.
I know the city attorney can address this as well, but we would ask for this not to be deferred indefinitely. There are issues with the services that have already been provided for the first two months of this year. In addition to the cost we would be charged as a non-user if we don't move forward to this within the next few weeks, so Mr. Smithson?
Sure, I'd ask if we do defer it, that we set a date. I know that the Shrek Board needs to make a determination whether or not they're going to treat us, if we're coming onboard, or if they're going to kind of set us up to pay those admin fees. So I would, I would ask that if we do defer it, maybe 30 days, we can get everything wrapped up and consider this, just in consideration of our new partner. I think it's, I think that's probably more fair.
In addition, we don't have a seat at the board right now without the service level agreement executed.
Okay. Do you want to amend it to March 27th, your motion?
Sure, but I want to make sure if we still have additional questions, we can...
Yeah, yeah, and is the second, Councilmember Cathcart, okay. Motion to amend it, defer to March 27th.
Yeah, I was just going to comment that I certainly agree with deferring it. I still have a number of questions related to this, but also just the larger, a number of larger issues. But an indefinite deferral, I definitely don't support, so I'd be more than happy to support a month deferral, I think that makes sense.
All right. Any other discussion?
Is there, is there any other detriment that could happen to the city through a deferral? Does it need to be a month? Can we do three weeks? I mean, I don't know how much time we need to get it done, I'm not, I'm not saying we should do three weeks, I'm just asking, what's the...
Well, I think it's important to set a date, because that gives everyone a target. If we get the information sooner, then we can bring it up sooner than that.
I think, Councilmember Bingo, we can certainly ask our questions, and we can answer them every, every week, every, we will, we, once we get on the board as a city organization, we will come to every public safety and community health meeting, provide an update with our Shrek partners. That's what, we will definitely do that. My concern is, we've been providing the service for over two months now. There is a cost that's been associated with it. I think, in respect to our partners, we need to move forward with the agreement and assign the cost. If we have questions about various elements, we can get those answered. It's not going to change the fact they're providing the service. If there's a question over the board membership, we can always address those and amend that later. I just feel that we have, in good faith, as a staff and a city, negotiated with a partner who's also negotiated in good faith, and we just believe that it's important to move this forward. Certainly, we want the questions answered, no question. But the question on the board seat, we can always go back and amend something to add what is being discussed, because it does take three votes of the Board of Commissioners. We, I, the city administrator, do not control that, so that's a separate conversation that needs to probably take place. The other thing I wanted to add, and then I'll stop talking. Two of the three items in the council's ordinance that relates to Shrek, which was the making sure we had access to stats and auto recordings, if we wanted those, we added a separate section, Article 13, in the service level agreement that addresses those. So we've taken care of two of the three. So again, I just want to urge that we consider moving this forward in a more timely fashion, out of nothing else, the courtesy and respect to our partners, and frankly, the customers that we serve who call 911 and need the fire service. Thank you.
I would just add that, and I know things have been crazy, but council has been asking questions for quite a long period of time, and I know things have been nuts with... Four years. So, to me, if we can get those questions answered, that is, the more, the better. But we have asked those questions, we haven't been sitting back, you know, not thinking about this. We have asked questions, we've waited for answers. And so I think if we can afford the time to extend this out a little bit, where we all feel comfortable with the numbers and the questions that we've asked, it's going to be better for both entities.
Council President, may I speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, and related to that question, I think one thing that will come in front of the board relates to the member versus non-member fees associated with this. And again, as the chair, I can't speak to what will be the position of the board, but I do think that the more time elapses, the ability, you know, right now, Shrek is dedicating a lot of resources and bandwidth to try and, try and work collaboratively to solve this. And I think the more, the more time elapses where Shrek commits resources and continues to provide service, that will be taken into consideration. And again, I can't, I can't answer that question, because we really can't answer it until the board knows the decision of the city, which, which we respect. But the more resources and time that elapses, that will be, you know, the city's incurring a lot of, or the dispatch is currently incurring a lot of costs and dedicating a lot of resources to this, this topic. So something to consider.
And Chief, thanks for that, and I don't think there's any question that the city won't pay for its share of that, we've been working together. We do, I think one of the challenges is, we, several of us were with Shrek Administration and were negotiating this in October, and at the time, we said that the city would only do it if we got some board members back on, including one selected by the council, but not an elected, because we respected that. And there was no objection from the people around the table from Shrek at that time. We expected that that would be handled. Our understanding is, county commissioners have to do that. I'm learning today, it doesn't sound like anyone from the city has really spoken to the county commissioners directly or their legal counsel about that, even though we passed that back in October. And so we need a little bit of time to talk to them and explain to them why, since they're the keepers of that and it's not Shrek Board that, because I don't see any reason why that can't get figured out. But under our current law, I still don't think we can actually do it until we get that figured out. And again, I was under the impression there was negotiations going on with the county all last fall and this winter. Apparently, there weren't, but we will remedy that right away, and assuming we can get that information, we don't need to wait till March 27th, it's just going to be a question of can we get, and it sounds like everyone's focused on it now, so that's the good news.
No, and appreciate the understanding around the fees there. And again, just reaffirm that discussions with the Board of County Commissioners.
Yep, no, we're clear on that now, so. All right, all, any, all those in favor of deferring till March 27th, unless someone brings it back earlier?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay. Thanks for your presentation, and we're looking forward to that information that's coming.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to come down.
Thank you, Chief Robrock and Ms. Markham and the Shrek staff who's here as well, really appreciate your time. All right, consent item two, I believe, was deferred for one week, so we'll move past that. We'll move to consent item three for the advance briefing for today, February 27. It's a consultant agreement with JRP Integrated Solutions for Broadband Fiber Consultant Services. Our presenter is our Director of Community and Economic Development, Mr. Steve McDonald.
Thank you, City Administrator, Council President, members of the council. I gave a full presentation last week on this. This is a portion of the ARPA broadband and fiber dollars that you guys approved, and we're bringing onboard a consultant that's going to help us with our city strategy to ensure that we get that city strategy and the city gets their fair share of the potential funding that's coming through in the BEAD grant through the county, Spokane County Broadband Action Team. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Item four on the consent agenda is personal service agreement with Tobe's Body and Fender for auto body repair service for the Fleet Services Department. Our presenter from the Fleet Services Department is Adam Russell.
Good afternoon, council. Fleet Services is requesting the approval of a three-year contract with Tobe's Body and Fender for auto body repair services. This contract has two one-year renewals for an estimated annual expenditure of $300,000, including tax. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. The next three items on the consent agenda, items five, six, and seven, will be briefed by Major McNabb. Item five is accept a subaward grant through the YMCA for the Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women. Item six is a subaward to Spokane Regional Domestic Violence Coalition. And item seven is agreement with Spokane County Sheriff's Office in conjunction with the Mental Health Field Response Team. Major McNabb.
Good afternoon, council, council president. First grant I'm going to brief you on is a sub grant awardee. We are the sub grant awardee through the YWCA and the Spokane Family Justice Center, also partnering with the Spokane County Sheriff's Office on a four-year award ending on September of 2026. Total award is $268,240. This pays for .48 of an FTE to take part in the Regional Domestic Violence Unit, which is currently staffed with four SPD detectives and a sergeant. The officers working in this unit collect and submit firearm purchase data to prosecutors for the first appearance. Officers engage in proactive, direct contact outreach with survivors and focused deterrence with offenders. Officers will conduct survivor home checks and assess safety and ensure compliance with no contact orders. And officers will conduct follow-up on DV investigations and restraining order violations. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Did you say .48 FTE?
Yes, for four years.
For four years, okay, that's what I was...
Yeah.
I was like, half a salary of $270,000 is a lot, but...
Yeah, that'd be one heck of a police officer.
That's right.
Yeah, so, yeah, for four years. Okay, I'll move on to the next one, which is the Firearms Technical Assistance Program. We are the main recipient of this Department of Justice award, and this, which has already been briefed and approved by council, this particular award is to approve the Spokane Regional Domestic Violence Coalition as a sub awardee for $223,208. What this provides is what they call a Firearms Technical Assistance Program's coordinator, and who will lead the effort in developing programs to reduce deaths and injuries from firearms related to domestic violence. They will assemble a multidisciplinary team, they will recruit volunteers, monitor and evaluate domestic case outcomes, focusing on improvement and sustainability planning, study feasibility of on-call advocacy programs, and develop a court watch program. SPD will remain, use the remaining funds from this total award to provide advanced DV training to, specific to protection orders, and requiring, which requires surrender of firearms, and provide overtime for these specially trained officers for enforcement of those orders. Any questions? All right, cooking right along here, moving to the, what this is, is an MOU with the Spokane County Sheriff's Office to, for us to be the sub awardee for the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs Award for the mental health co-deployed teams. What this gives us is $879,780, which we use for salary and benefits for six FTEs, overtime and travel and training. And under this grant, SPD will provide one sergeant, one mental health coordinator, and four senior police officers to work with the co-deployed mental health providers. Any questions? Outstanding, thank you.
Thank you, Major McNabb. Next item on the consent agenda is item number eight, which is agreement with Spokane County and Spokane County Superior Court for the sharing of jury management services. And our presenter this afternoon on that item is Mr. Howard Delaney.
Good afternoon, council. This is the annual agreement with Spokane County Superior Court for management of our jury services. They qualify the pools, and then we draw on those people from municipal court juries. This has been essentially the same contract for the last 20 years, and it's just rolling forward. You'll see the estimate is $10,000. That's a little low. The estimate done was based on COVID years, so there wasn't a lot of jury trials happening during COVID. So I just wanted council to know that that estimate may be exceeded in 2023. Just wanted everyone to know that. Any questions? Thank you very much.
If I can, council president, I want to thank Mr. Delaney for his assistance with us as we work through the Primera Building and the assessment. I just wanted to recognize and acknowledge you for that, that effort. Thank you, sir. All right, item nine is the outside special counsel contract amendments. Nine A is with the Summit Law Group, assist the city with labor negotiations. Nine B is Pacific Law Group out of Seattle on the matter of Lonny Tostrud versus the City of Spokane. And item nine C is a contract amendment with Anchor, Tohan, and Kanel Gates to assist the city with the Climate Commitment Act. And our presenter is our interim city attorney, Mr. Lyndon Smithson.
Thank you, everybody, for having me back, I appreciate it. First is with Summit Law Group, and generally, what we use Summit Law Group for is our negotiations with our bargaining units. We're still in the bargaining unit, or we're still in negotiations with the Police Guild, and we also will start with SFO in just a little while. So we are asking to increase the amount of that contract from $75,000 to $125,000. One thing that is important to note is that we are asking to amend the contract with Summit. This was a conversation I had with council president, and this kind of surrounded the bargaining unit or the bargaining representative ordinance that the council passed last month, I think it was, maybe it was even this month. The days go by very quickly. So that's one thing that we updated on this, we are kind of laying out what everybody's roles are, a little bit, a little bit more in-depth, and everybody's met Mr. John Henry that's been in executive session several times, and he's agreed to that, so that's kind of where, where we are at with the Summit Law Group. I am asking that we do devote more resources to that, because I need to start paying my bills, to be honest with you.
And I just wanted to enter and thank Mr. Smithson for his assistance. The things that we put in came out of some of our early experiences with the fire contract and some of the police, to make it clear that Summit understands that city council makes the final decisions on labor contracts, and that they should not get confused about who their client is. If we're arguing between the administration and the council, they shouldn't take sides in that. They should let us have that argument and just support us in our negotiations with law enforcement. And so I think with that understanding in place, things will go more smoothly.
And to kind of dovetail on that, I know that there were, there was some consternation around the, the fire contract. I did come in around the end of that and at the start of the Police Guild, and I made a promise to the council that that would not happen again, that we will come before you and we will update you on what's going on in negotiations, and I think that we've kept up on that. I think that is why Mr. Henry was fine to change the, the language in our contract, because... because he understands that that's the commitment I made to council, and so trying to uphold The next one is for Pacific Law Group. Sorry, let's, let's step back. Does anybody have any questions in reference to the Summit Law Group? Thank you. Next one is Pacific Law Group. This is a little bit more straightforward. This is our outside counsel that is handling a pretty significant lawsuit that has been filed against us. It's a wrongful termination claim by a police officer. We are in the discovery stage of that case. We know that that can take quite a bit of, of money. We have devoted $100,000. We're asking to increase that by another $100,000. We're pretty sure that we will get to the end of $200,000 by the time the case either goes to trial or resolves. So it's, it's probably going to be an expensive one, but it's one that we feel confident that, that we made the right decisions, and, and that's where we're at.
It's been, how long has it been going on?
I believe this has been going on for two or three years.
Okay.
Yes.
And when will our next update be in executive session on the status of this as you're going through discovery?
I believe we're setting executive session next couple weeks.
In a few weeks. We're not, this one, we're not doing next week. We are doing one next week on a couple of matters, but we're going to schedule the kind of quarterly talk about everything in the, in March.
Yeah, we, we just had that, well, my office probably completed it early January, but I know that we all have been extremely busy, so I have not asked for an executive session, but we'll get to that in the next few weeks. And we'll have a overview of all our pending litigation. Any more questions on Pacifica? Thank you. This last one is for KNL Gates. They are helping us with the Climate Commitment Act. And so just so everybody's aware, the Climate Commitment Act was passed by the state. It is going to put a high burden, a lot of costs on our waste of energy plant. I frankly, I looked at the legislation. I think maybe they forgot about us. I was speaking with Libby Shadle in our office, asking how many other waste of energy plants are there in the state? There aren't any. There are some on the West Coast, but there are not any other in the state, and so I frankly think the legislature kind of neglected us, did not know maybe what we did. So this law firm is going to help us whether, what path do we want to go forward? Do we need to file suit? Do we want to lobby legislature to change it? And I know that, that we have had some interest from our local legislatures. They're understanding that maybe this was a mistake and that we need to kind of correct this. So we will ask them to guide us through, through this process, and I'll keep everybody up to date if we decide that we're turning and, and need to pursue litigation.
I guess I'm just wondering, it sounds like part of this, maybe not entirely, but part of it is a duplication of what we already pay for, for our lobbyists. And so I'm just kind of wondering, have we thought about using the resource we already pay for, for some of this?
Absolutely, and that, that'll go into our, our analysis for sure.
Okay.
Come on up, Marlene.
So this is sort of supplemental to that. As you are aware, Councilmember Cathcart, we are moving forward with a strategy on the legislative side, which our lobbyists, Nick Federici and Luke Esser, have been helping us with. Our current plan is to propose a budget proviso to get a lifecycle analysis of our emissions as compared to landfilling. So that's moving ahead. Senator Holy and Senator Billig are assisting us with that strategy. In part, this was in response to a lot of the rulemaking that was happening at the ecology level so that we could at least have our input and be heard during those processes. So we're continuing that. Plus, we're trying to understand how a local municipality would engage. If we had to buy credits and those kinds of things, which is different than a private company, how do we navigate, say, the council process for approvals and those kinds of things? So, so they're helping us. It isn't so much around the legislative strategy, but around the other work that has to happen to make sure that we're prepared regardless of how this goes forward. So, so thank you for that.
The expert.
Also, I was just going to get an update. March 13th is our executive session on the overall litigation status.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Smithson. The next item on the advance briefing for today, Monday, February 27, Item Ten, the contract amendment with Rockin DW Construction for additional work on the Spokane Police Department Academy restroom remodel. Our presenter from facilities is Mr. Dave Steele.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. This changeover came for, or comes forward, one of the things we found after we bid, got into the walls, which everybody knows, once you open the walls, you find out what's really real. All of the toilet hangers, the carriers that hold the wall mounted toilets had to be replaced. We had to replace plumbing because of the way they were put in. They were not adjustable in height. We couldn't move them up to current ADA standards. We couldn't adjust the spacing along the wall to current ADA standards. So what you're seeing before you is a number to replace all those pieces of hardware, re-vent them, re-drain them, cut out the concrete slab to tie back into the drain line, and then put all those pieces back with some framing. There's some minor electrical that we went ahead and upgraded that we found, that we brought it up to code just to make sure that we were clean coming out of there. And then a little bit of work on the lockers. Once, once we started breaking down a bank of lockers, we realized we had some raw ends that didn't have any caps on them, so we brought it all together, and, and we're bringing that forward to you for your approval. Awesome. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Next, Item Eleven, report of the mayor pending, eleven A, claims of payments of previously proved obligations of Parks and Library for February 10, eleven B, claims of payments of previously proved obligations for Parks and Library for February 17, and Item Eleven C, payroll claims of previous approved obligations through February 18. Eleven A, B, and C have the appropriate numbers to those and will be considered this evening by the city council. Item Twelve, city council meeting minutes for February 6th and 13th. Those will also be considered this evening by the council during legislative session. Moving to special budget ordinances, the first ordinance you already heard from Major McNabb relating to an action arising from the need to accept the Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women Grant Award. Major McNabb just presented that to you. The next ordinance for your consideration and briefing is an action arising from the need to accept distribution of state funds for recent legislation regarding police training. And our presenter from the Spokane Police Department is Jackie McConnell.
Good afternoon, council. This information came to us that there's some funding from the 2022 Washington State Legislature that they provided funding specifically for training, having to do with the enactment of some legislation in '21 and '22 for use of force, duty to intervene. And then, so there's three House bills having to do with use of force. So this is just acceptance. It's about $114,754.
And is it going to be used for actual training?
This one actually, unlike the other one, this specifically says training, and so, again, like the other one, there's very little information provided. The other one basically just said for anything related to the legislation. This one specifically says training, so yes. And again, very little information. So the information that I had made it seem like as an agency, if you put in for it, you're going to get it, and it delineated every agency and showed what that distribution would be.
Yeah, thank you. I was just wondering if you had an idea of what that training might be, because I know last time we talked, you said additional funding. Wasn't necessarily the barrier for additional training.
We haven't talked about what training yet will do with this. We are looking into how we can best use the money for the training, yes. And you can always come back and provide an update, absolutely, when we talk about that and actually, like I said, the process seems easy. I think it's like last time, I think we just get the money, but then once we get the money, we'll absolutely look into what training we're going to do, and I'd be more than happy to come back and provide an update. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Moving to resolutions and final reading ordinances, the first resolution, I believe Council President Beggs has already introduced this, is supporting the 90-day due diligence related to establishing, establishing the regional collaborative effort for homelessness. The next resolution is acknowledging the recommendation of the Neighborhood Project Advisory Committee for the West Quadrant Tax Increment Financing. And our presenter on this topic is from our Planning Department, Mr. Spencer Gardner.
Good afternoon, council members. This resolution would recognize and, I guess, formally approve the use of TIFF money from the West Quadrant TIFF for a number of projects in the West Central Neighborhood. So a little history, the Reach West Central, which is a nonprofit that operates in the West Central Neighborhood, forwarded a request to the Neighborhood Project Advisory Committee, NPAC. That request was for $300,000 in money for planning and implementation of projects that had been identified in the original 2007 TIFF ordinance. City staff, after looking through the proposal from Reach, determined that it would not, they couldn't work through the logistics of handing that money over to a, a private organization to do that. So instead, we have committed to developing that work plan and getting, getting a project together essentially to accomplish some of what the, the neighborhood has requested. So the NPAC heard this request last year and approved it formally. So we've, we've been talking internally about how to structure this project, whether it's ICM or Public Works that manages this money, because a lot of it's really more focused on implementation, or whether this is a planning thing. Where we've ended up is that this would be managed by the Planning Department, but we would be coordinating very closely with ICM and with the other folks in Public Works. So the goal here is implementation of projects, not necessarily planning of projects. There's probably a mix of planning work and engineering work that needs to happen here. But the, the request is for $300,000. The current TIFF fund has a balance of nearly $1.5 million, so there is ample money. In fact, this has already been essentially budgeted in the current budget, so there's no need for an SBO or anything. It's really just a resolution from council to recognize that this is a valid use of those funds.
Councilmember Schratt.
Spencer, I just want to say thank you for your help, and Kevin as well, because this has been going on for quite a while. But just so council knows, West Central is so ready for this, and they've been waiting so long, and if we can at least help move them along tonight, that would be absolutely fabulous. I know they appreciate it. It's overdue.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Thank you. Next up, under final reading ordinances, vacating a portion of 7th Avenue east of Government Way as requested by Catholic Charities. Our presenter this afternoon, Mr. Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon, council. We had the hearing on this project back on January 9th. This is the Catholic Charities Project. They're at 7th and Government Way, between Harts and Government Way, and they intend to build 48 housing units in their affordable housing, along with support staff as part of the facilities there. And we approved that vacation subject to conditions, and basically the condition, it was a no-cost vacation that was agreed upon by council. And then we did have, we reserved easements in there for Lumen, the Vista, and Comcast in the right of way, and that's why we've taken a bit of time to actually come back to you. There was some discussion as to whether that was going to work for Catholic Charities, and right now they've agreed that we'll reserve those easements. If we need to modify them, we can always come back and amend the ordinance to accommodate whatever they need to do. But at this point in time, we're just here for final reading. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you, Eldon. Next, under final reading ordinances, I believe Council President Beggs has already walked through this one, but this is establishing a local program for assisting tenants and landlords. Moving on then to final reading ordinance relating to the Water Department and water rates. Our presenter is Corinne Morse.
Thank you, council. This is a final reading for our basic water service charge that we have for many years turned off manually when somebody has a temporary need to have their water off. So the meter's there, the services are there, but that service charge has been turned off. In our new system, if water service is recognized, whether it's on or off, the charge will stay on. So we have suspended it for the last few months, but this is to have that service charge remain on during those times, whenever there's a meter at the property that has water service available. The impact is to less than 1,000 of our customers, and is typically due to construction inspections, snowbirds, that sort of thing. Is there any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. Ordinance 36357 will be considered under hearings, Item H1, which we'll get to momentarily. That brings us to our first reading ordinances. We have two consecutive ones dealing with non-exclusive franchise to use the public right of way. The first one is with MCI Metro Access, and the second is with Fat Beam LLC. Our presenter from the City Attorney's Office, Mr. Tim Zamblin.
Good afternoon, council. Ordinance C3636O is a franchise with MCI Access Transmission Services, which is owned by Verizon Transmission Services in Delaware. About five years ago, Verizon purchased the MCI telecommunications lines that are in Spokane. So they're not going to be putting a lot of, or any new telecommunications fiber in because it's already there. This is kind of like a renewal. It's for 10 years, and the reason why we have the two five-year options is because this fiber wire is, has been placed into the ground about 30 years ago, and there's, they're not going to touch it. Any questions on this one? Okay. Ordinance C36361 is a franchise with Fat Beam LLC, and they're a company that is based out of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. They're a telecommunications company that is registered to operate in the state of Washington as a telecommunications company. This is for a 10-year term. What Fat Beam is going to be doing first in the city of Spokane is working with District 81, upgrading their fiber and to their facilities. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zamblin. The next first reading ordinance is relating to the adoption of the Cannon Streetcar Suburb Local Historic District Overlay Zone and Design Standards. And our presenter who's online is Megan Duval.
Good afternoon, council. So this was briefed on the February 13th Urban Experience Committee meeting. Basically, it's the ordinance to create the overlay zone for the Cannon Streetcar Suburb Historic District. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. I wasn't anticipating giving you a presentation today, but it was going to next Monday for the hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Duval. And our final item on the Monday, February 27 advance agenda is under hearings, first reading, final reading ordinance relating to the establishment of a sales and use tax deferral program for affordable housing, and that is under Councilmember Zappone.
I feel like we've talked about this enough, so...
Yeah, we're good. Council president, that concludes the advance briefing agenda for today, Monday, February 27.
All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I might have missed it. Did we talk about the landlord tenant on here?
We did. We got the two. We got the two.
We substituted at the beginning.
Oh, at the beginning, that's right.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the agenda's approved. Now we have a brief advance agenda for March 6th.
Yes, we do. This is the advance briefing agenda for Monday, March 6th. We start out with a couple of appointments, Historic Landmarks Commission and the Bicycle Advisory Board. One appointment and one reappointment. Moving then to the consent agenda, back to Ms. Duval. Recommendations to list the following on the Spokane Registry of Historic Places, the Judge Blake House, 1A, 1B, the Highland Park United Methodist Church, and 1C, the Walden Apartments. Ms. Duval.
Yes, and all of these were briefed at the February 13th Urban Experience Committee, and they did go in front of the Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission on February 15th, and all were recommended for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Duval. Appreciate that. Items two and three relating to the report of the mayor pending claims and payments approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library. That information will be completed and ready for council's consideration on Monday, March 6th, as will Item Three, city council meeting minutes. Moving then to the legislative agenda, special budget ordinances. The first ordinance is relating to an action arising from the acceptance of the Department of Commerce grant funds to the amount of 2.8 million. Ms. Saracides did brief that at the last committee on February 13, which then leads us to our final item on the Monday, March 6th advance briefing agenda, and this is an action arising from the Escalator... And this is an action arising from the escalated timeline for Expo 50 and the various capital projects. Our presenter is our Director of Public Works, Marlene Feist.
Thank you, council and Johnny. So we talked about this the other day. This is around the real estate excise tax and use of that for the Expo plus 50 projects. I know there's some concern that we want to have a full discussion on read. I believe Finance has reached out to Hannah Lee and the council president about setting up a time. I don't know if that's been scheduled yet. Our biggest time constraint on this one, our most urgent need, is around the South Suspension Bridge. That goes to add, according to Mr. Jones, next week, and they're hoping for an April contract approval for that project. We do have funds set aside that are already budgeted for sort of those flexible projects. If we get grants in, we use them for that. If not, we accelerate the maintenance side. So we do have enough funding in there to do it. We could do a smaller SBO if council would like us to do that and bring it forward using those dollars, so you can have a larger discussion about what's in the reserve location. Or we can get that study station going for you earlier so that you can make all those decisions cumulatively, so.
I think we're looking to maybe defer this just for one week. Matt Boston will be back, and he had some things on it that Finance wasn't available until April to meet with us, which is too, which will be great to do, but we have stuff we have to do for homeless, for track and that. But Mr. Boston says we should be able to get that done in the next few days.
Perfect.
So if we can, if there's a motion to defer this until the 13th.
So moved for until the 13th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? And we'll probably modify it, but I've assured Marlene and Garrett that we know construction season's coming. We got to get it done.
Yeah, and we're happy to do whatever staff work we need to do to get that completed, so thank you.
And council president, I spoke too soon. There is one final item. I didn't turn to my last page. Always, complete the book. Don't cut the last two pages short. This is hearing H1, final reading ordinance relating to the adoption of the Cannon Streetcar Suburb Local Historic District Overlay Zone and Design Standards and Guidelines. Ms. Duval just gave you a briefing on that not even more than five minutes ago. So I believe, council president, with that, this does conclude the advance briefing for Monday, March 6.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the advanced agenda for March 6?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, I've got a couple, so that's approved. I've got a couple of things. One, March 20, council, I'm going to be gone in DC lobbying. Councilmember Kinnear is celebrating her birthday. She's going to be gone, and people, we don't have almost anything, if anything, on the agenda, so we're looking to cancel that meeting unless anyone objects to that. But we want to let people know.
March 20 is my birthday. I celebrate my birthday all month.
Okay.
But, yeah, we have to share with me.
Taking the whole month off?
Yeah. Councilmember Strattan has a birthday coming up as well, I think.
Do you need a motion for that, or just consent?
No, just, I'll cancel it. I just want to make sure nobody had some exciting new ordinance as an emergency on that day. Then the second thing I wanted to just mention is tonight, as you know, there's a lot of interest in the landlord tenant things tonight. My plan is to go a little bit out of order, and I was going to do, after we finish the consent agenda, I was going to do the first reading ordinances in the hearing, and then go to special budget ordinances, and then resolutions and ordinances, but I'm going to revert, I'm going to let the Water Department go ahead of landlords, so.
So you're making that one last?
Yes.
Yeah.
And in our rules, oh, Hannah Lee wants me to remind you that on March 20, even though we don't have a council meeting that night, we still have a finance committee meeting afternoon.
Correct.
And all our regular meetings. It's just the legislative session. But we, under our rules, if we're not done at 9:30, we either, it bumps to the next meeting, or we extend. So that's, I believe that's the rule, so just keep in mind.
Did you want to get a sense of the lay of the land now, or?
No, we can. Just letting you know what the process is, is that, and what happens, just to, so anyone who signed up for tonight, if it bumps to another night, whoever signed up tonight would get to testify if they didn't, but there would not be a new sign up.
Just extend.
It would just extend. So the question is extending to the next meeting or extending after 9:30?
But question, then, if you extend to the next meeting, then you have to extend the vote to the next meeting.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, yep, so that's.
Really quick, since we're talking about canceling meetings, I know we talked in December at retreat, just you and I, about potentially doing a two-week August recess. I know that could help people plan their summer plans and staff. I know talking to staff, too, helps them not have to be presenting and stuff, so it gives them a window to take vacation instead of just one week. So I just was wondering if people are up in the second week.
Thank you. So that, just to be clear, hopefully, Ms. Allers, we're off the week of the 7th, right? So the question is extending that to the 14th.
July 7?
No, August.
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 Any thoughts?
Do we have to decide today?
You don't, but.
Just putting it out there.
Putting it out, great. Councilmember Kinnear.
So another procedural question is, when we have a lot of folks signing up, we have the option of cutting the testimony to two minutes. So is that an option as well?
It is an option. Let's do this, my suggestion, think about that. We'll let you know in plenty of time. Hannah Lee will send you out how many people are signed up to testify on ordinances and stuff, and if people are interested in that, someone can bring a motion if they want.
I will just say, I would prefer that we remain at three minutes for tonight's testimony because we've made so many changes, and now there's two ordinances when people aren't expecting one, and so I just think people need to be able to share what they're thinking.
Also, just to, I'm just taking testimony on both ordinances at the same time. We're not doing double testimony. So that's a good point, but think about, but that's how you would handle that, is once we know how many people are signed up, you can kind of calculate, and then if someone wants to make a motion at some time procedurally. My only request is that you do it sooner rather than later, because if people have planned for three minutes, then it's going to be less. Give them a little time to get ready.
Will the, both ordinances be downloaded online so people can check it out, check them out before the meeting?
I don't know where they will be, but we will get our best to get them.
I do have them linked from the testimony form. So even if people are coming in person, the link to the testimony form's in the packet, and there is a link to both of the ordinances in there.
That's great to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Make sure you have some good nutrition.
Lots of coffee.
And we'll see you soon with that. We're adjourned until 6:00 PM.